Supervisor Taylor is joining us by phone for this meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Nelson. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the April 30th meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from human resources includes A, approval of memorandum and personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate hiring process. Item five from the county auditor includes A, approval of resolution adopting and levying special assessment in the Sand Hill Lakeport Inter County Drainage District of Monona and Woodbury Counties, Iowa; B, approval of resolution adopting and levying special assessment in the Little Sioux Inter County Drainage District of Monona, Woodbury, and Harrison Counties, Iowa; and C, approval of resolution adopting and levying special assessment in the McCannless Inter County Drainage District of Monona and Woodbury Counties, Iowa. And item six from the county treasurer includes A, approved property tax refund request for parcel ending in 2008 in the amount of $1,433; and B, approved property tax refund request for parcel ending in 2016 in the amount of $856. And item seven for secondary roads is to authorize the chairman to sign permit to work in the right-of-way for Mitch Parker. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Next on our agenda is item eight, which is our 4:35 PM set time. Close enough to that, I think. So this is submitted from the board, Executive bidder Heather. This is a public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as 322011 Street. Before we receive bids on this property, is there anyone to speak for or against the sale of this property? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We're now receiving bids on this property. If you'd like to bid, please approach the microphone, state your name and address, and your opening bid, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dwayne Hughes. I live over on the west side, Sioux City.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry.
Your address, please.
Yes, 2424 West Third Street. And I'd like to offer the minimum bid.
Very well. Minimum bid is?
$120.
$120?
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to bid? Going once, going twice. Sold. I'll move the property to be sold for $120 to Mr...say one more time?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Your name, one more time?
Dwayne Hughes.
Dwayne Hughes?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, sir. Heather will take care of you in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are about five minutes ahead of our 4:40 PM set time, which is item nine. Let's go ahead, skip ahead to item 10 from the Siouxland Mental Health Center, Morgan Haskell. This is approval of proclamation proclaiming May 2024 is Mental Health Month in Woodbury County. What?
Um, yes, so we would just like to thank everybody for proclaiming mental health in Woodbury County as Mental Health Awareness Month. We know that the need for services and awareness for mental health is at an all-time high. And as the community leaders, we can come together and break the stigma. And all that we ask is if everybody here, everybody who lives in Woodbury County can participate wearing green on May 9th, this Thursday, to help break that stigma. Thank you.
Very good. All move approval.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you for your efforts in that regard. At this time, Mr. Priestley, go ahead and come up and give us an overview of these items, if you would. We're still a little bit ahead of our 4:40 PM set time for item nine. This is from Planning and Zoning Director Daniel Priestley. You want to give us a summary of our third and final reading?
Yeah, the floodplain amendments are required from FEMA to keep us in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program in anticipation for the adoption of the new maps on July 17th, 2024. So it's pretty much a housekeeping measure to keep us within compliance. I did mention last week that the new maps are available under preliminary in parentheses up on Beacon, so the public has a chance to go look and kind of do a comparison by turning each of those layers on and off. So it's something I always encourage everyone to have a look at, for sure. The next agenda item is the proposed comprehensive plan for 2040. It's been an effort for years in the works to collect data and information from the public and try to understand what kind of county we want to be over the next several years into long future. So it has a lot to do with long-range planning, everything of those aspects. And then the third item, of course, is the solar debate that has been about a year in the works and involving up to eight public meetings, six public hearings, two work sessions involving the zoning commission, and definitely lots of work that went in by the commissioners to generate that information and data as far as their recommendation over to the board for utility-scale solar systems and industrial zones.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and open 9A. This is our public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendments to the floodplain management ordinance in the zoning ordinance section 5.03. Is there anyone who would like to speak during the public hearing? I'll move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to approve the third and final reading of the ordinance. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And item C is to adopt the ordinance for the zoning ordinance text amendments to the floodplain management ordinance in the zoning ordinance section 5.03. All move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Move on to item 9D, which is our 4:42 PM set time. This is to conduct the third and final public hearing for the consideration of the proposed Woodbury County Comprehensive Plan 2040. Public hearing is now open. Anyone would like to speak? Give their input. Filibuster for three minutes.
Dan, what is the best place for the public to go and check out where they can read through the new comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan preliminarily has been up on the Community and Economic Development website. We've had the existing one out there and the proposed one out there, and so it's kind of linked off of Simcoe's page as well. And Simcoe's had resources through the tenure of the adoption process and the preparation process, so folks should be able to see a timeline and kind of some essence of the meetings and things that took place. So it's kind of the county as a landing spot, as well as being able to get into the Simcoe resources through linking, so.
It's kind of an interesting timeline, because at the beginning, you know, you and David and I, and you know, it was, I think, Aaron Burzine at the time at Simcoe that were initiating this process, and throughout all our meetings and hearings, a number of the county employees that were involved are now retired. And Aaron, of course, left Simcoe, and Corinne has replaced her, and we still had a, you know, global pandemic that decided to slow the process down, but we are here today, and this is the final step.
Will there be any public meetings or gatherings to showcase this coming up, or at the fair, or anything?
That's definitely been done in terms of moving forward. One of the fun aspects of actually working the fair on it was the pursuit of getting folks to fill out the surveys. And I remember, at the time when David was here, he had sent me out to go work the booth, and I was chasing people down, "This is for the future of your county, please fill this out." And we really had a good turnout, once we were kind of more so pursuing people to do it versus, oh, come to this table and hope they fill it out. So I think we got a little bit of an energy verse there for the fair, so that's a wonderful forum to meet folks.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen, for hitting us right back on the nose at 4:42 PM, which is our set time. So hearing no other public comment, all move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. All is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Mr. Taylor, did you...are you still there?
Yes, I am. I voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Passes five zero. Item E is to approve the third and final reading of the Comprehensive Plan 2040. All move to approve the third and final reading.
Second.
Second by Nelson. Hearing no discussion. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item F is to adopt the Woodbury County Comprehensive Plan 2040 and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution. I'll move that. Second by Raddick. Any discussion? All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item G now is our 4:45 PM set time. This is a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendments for utility-scale solar energy systems, conditional use in the general industrial zoning district, including to add a new section 5.08, amend the table of contents, and renumber the ordinance page numbers to accommodate the addition of the new section. Mr. Priestley?
Yes, the...again, this is the recommendation from the zoning commission to have a added featured conditional use permit process for the permitting of utility-scale solar systems in the general industrial zoning district. It has features such as a decommissioning plan, as well as a relationship involving all of the zoning bodies, which are the zoning commission, Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Supervisors.
Very good. Anyone to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item H is to approve the third and final reading of the ordinance. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And item I finally is to adopt the ordinance for the zoning ordinance text amendments previously mentioned. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, Dan, for your work. We will move on now to item 11. From the Board of Supervisors, myself. This includes three action items, A, B, and C. I want to start off by, at least on the county side, thanking Melissa Thomas, HR Director, and Joshua Widman, Assistant County Attorney, and Heather from our board office for their help in this. I certainly didn't do it alone, and this has been a long and challenging process to piece together how to essentially start creating a potential county department with the addition of medical examiner investigators. And to model it across, and to model it against different counties, and the way that different counties do it is extremely varied. There are set fees for death investigations. Some counties do it hourly, some counties do a rate of on-call, which is a percentage, some do a flat on-call rate, some do other benefits, some do contract relationships, some do part-time employee relationships, some do on-call relationships. And so we're looking at comparables across the state, and every county's doing it differently. So Woodbury County has come up with something that is different, just like everyone else. So the first item is A, this is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Dr. Julie Briner, Woodbury County Medical Examiner, for January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2025, a two-year agreement. We don't...we, of course, appointed her at the beginning of this year, but don't have an official contract on record. This is, again, thanks to the help of the Assistant County Attorney and getting different things updated in this. The change that is...there is to note is simply a reference to the medical examiner investigators, which states that they'll be contracted with the county, but that the medical examiner will oversee and supervise them. So that would be the change to look at from prior versions, but are there any questions for me or Melissa on the agreement with the medical examiner itself?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Taylor?
So in the agreement, does it specify the rate of pay for the MEIs, or is that something that's handled by the next two items?
That would be in the next two items.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Second motion by Raddick. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B and C are similar. Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement with Elizabeth Ford, Medical Examiner Investigator. We have the resumes for these two individuals in the board packet. I will note that there has been one change to the agreement apart from what is in the board packet. As I mentioned, this has been somewhat of a mad dash to get this effective as soon as humanly possible, and based on some delays we've had with attorneys and getting information from other counties, we turned this around fairly quickly. And so there is an update that, based on Melissa's discussion with the two individuals interested in contracting with the county, they decided it was more...that they desired to have more of the call pay than mileage, and so there's been an addition of the one and a removal of the other. And that's simply based on, you know, the preference of those individuals, and they're on the same page. There is, in regards to compensation, again, each county does it differently. Some do hourly, some do a flat fee per investigation. We settled on $300 per death investigation. That, I think, in conversations with experts in the state, potentially overshoots a little bit, but it's based on the fact that, you know, death investigations take X number of hours. We looked at what the hourly rate was for other counties and tried to piece together something that's representative. And most importantly involves not too much additional clerical work, since we don't have a investigator that is also a, you know, coordinator position that would deal with a lot of the tracking involved. So it's more preferred to simply have that metric. And then necessary supplies and equipment will be provided. The agreement states that, as an independent contractor, legally, the contractor is required to furnish their own equipment, but Woodbury County realizes that this is something that we can and in many cases should pay for as far as supplies. The challenge is with Dr. Briner, those supplies are provided by the hospital since she's an employee there. Contract relationships with the county is different, because the supplies are sourced from the same source that supplies Dr. Briner, the hospital. And so how do we have some sort of understanding of what those invoices are? Do we reimburse a portion of each purchase order? Do we swipe the county's credit card, so to speak, and only pay for a portion? These are questions that we're still working on, frankly. We still have requested, and Melissa's requested a couple times, a list of those costs and those supplies, and we don't have those in full form yet, but we have requested it, and we're trying to get a better understanding of what those costs are, but we didn't want to delay this agreement. So that's why there's that clause in there about as mutually agreed in writing with the county. We're not simply going to write a blank check, but of course, we're going to reimburse supplies that we have assurance are going to be used by our contracted medical examiner investigators. And I will note, both of these individuals, Elizabeth Ford and Sarah Harris, have signed these agreements before the board today, and so that's good news. Questions or comments?
So they're okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one?
Yes.
Is there on-call pay included in the contracts? Is that something that you had mentioned was potentially updated? I saw Dr. Briner's email today.
Yes, I had mentioned that was updated, and that is in the agreements that they have signed.
Okay, thanks for your work on that.
Mr. Nelson?
That answers my question. How many...I guess I had one other question. How many MEIs would Dr. Briner like us to have? Is two just a starting point? Do we need more? I don't want these people to be overtaxed, you know?
Sure. Yeah, two is definitely a starting point. I think we could do with six.
That's kind of a number that I had in mind. I mean, if you just look at how many weeks, you know, you know, with two, they have two weeks a month, essentially, and if you could get five to six, it would be a lot easier on all of them, so.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful.
It's a good deal, because you couldn't pay me anything to touch those bodies, so. But on a serious note, obviously, this is probably one of the bigger challenges, you know, facing the board as of December last year, and of course, the biggest still not done, but, you know, thanks for your work and thanks for your help, Melissa. Obviously, as a board, we appreciate all that, so I'll go ahead and move 11B.
Second.
Next by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any discussion on this one? All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item 11C is to authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement with Sarah Harris, Medical Examiner Investigator. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Raddick. And of course, we're very appreciative of these two individuals, and if we had four more, we would hire them right away. So we're glad that these two are on the same page and able and willing to help take some of the burden off, and there's definitely still more work to do, but it's a start. Every area of the county is dealing with staffing, and so. Any other discussion on 11C? All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item 12 from secondary roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, includes A, for action, approve the project agreement with the Farmers Drainage District for work on lateral H along 280th
The project on lateral H has been under development for about the last five years. This is along our 280th Street, which is a foreign-to-market route. It crosses Dallas Avenue, paved foreign-to-market route. This is the lateral that also currently drains Salix, so all of this water continues to the Farmers Drainage District ditch, the main ditch, which lies east of Dallas Avenue. We have some real benefit from this project back in 2006, 2007. A number of our ditches on the Farmers laterals were overdug. They were excavated six to 12 inches below crossroad pipes. It's resulted in a lot of pounding along the road, and we've had some instability of the slopes. We've got vertical cuts where they overcut them, and as soils around here will do, we end up with bank slides when those soils get saturated. So part of this job is taking and moving that ditch lateral farther to the north, restoring our proper road slopes. So there's a good deal of county benefit from this one, even though it is primarily a drainage district project. Where we're crossing Dallas Avenue, it involves a replacement of a concrete box culvert and getting it set at the proper elevation, so there's some substantial expense for the county just in that portion of the project alone. We don't have a final estimate on the project at this point in time. We're providing the cost for the crossroad culverts, sharing in the excavation cost, and sharing in the right-of-way costs with Farmers Drainage District, so I recommend approval of the agreement.
Second.
I'll move it, and Nelson will second it. All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Farmers will be happy to have this drainage, share this work done in their district, so.
Item...
They've been waiting a long time.
Good. Item B is to award the quote for the replacement of the District Two Foreman's truck to Keneffler Chevrolet for $36,387.
We accepted quotes for two pickups, one for District Two, one for District Three. Seeing where the prices were on the large trucks and not knowing where we were going to be until after today's bids are open for the remainder of our equipment for this year, I'm only recommending at this point in time that we award the Foreman's truck for District Two. It has 182,000 miles on it. It's getting pretty long in the tooth. It's time to get it replaced. The one in District Three has less miles on it. Depending on where the equipment costs come after today's bids are opened, we'll see whether I recommend that second award, but it's one of those where we just have to try to stay within budget. And my projected costs were almost $55,000 above what I budgeted for this year, and we've seen some significant increases in costs of our equipment.
Second.
Mr. Raddick, second by Bittenger. Any further discussion? All is in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to award the truck quote for the single-axle truck to Boyer Trucks for $195,021.
The...that was the low quote for single-axle trucks for this year, and I recommend award to Boyer.
I don't have that sheet in front of me. What brand of truck was that?
That is a Western Star.
And is this to replace a single axle that you have now?
This is replacing 503, which is another single axle. The tandem axle, I needed some additional information from the low bidder. I got that last week, but not in time to include it with the recommendations for board approval this week. You'll see that recommendation come next week. The low bid on that one was tech equipment, and it appears as if that truck is in compliance. Initially, it didn't have the correct transmission. I allowed them to submit with the transmission that we called for, and that did raise the price above their quote, but it's...they are still low bid. But again, I didn't have that in time to make the Thursday deadline for board agenda.
What district is this truck going into?
503 goes to Hornick.
And so you're working on just having one single-axle truck per district? Is that correct?
Two. Three tandems, two single axles.
Okay.
Is where we'll end up as we work through this. This gives districts...District Five already has three tandems. With the purchase for District Two, they will have three tandems. Then next year, we're proposing an additional tandem for District Three, and District Four then will come along last.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move 12C.
Second motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Now, we did have an error on item D. I missed...I did have a typo. This should be receive track loader costs or quotes for this set of bids.
Okay, so D is to receive track loader quotes in return to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
Correct.
Do we have several bids on each of these?
You have something else?
We do have a 5:00 PM set time. We do have a 5:00 PM set time.
I should bring those up when we're done.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry, I'll just go ahead and pass these out.
All right, we are at our 5:00 PM set time. This is item 13 from Board Administration, Budget Director Dennis Butler. First is item A. This is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Dennis, do you want to introduce anything first? Or just answer any questions people have?
I just want to say it took a long, hard work. It took like three or four months, longer than usual. But there's a lot of things we had to go through. The bottom line is, for the taxpayer is in cities and residential, the taxes, if your house stayed $100,000 with a rollback, your tax will go down 15.48%, which is $60.36 in the rural, in the urban cities. Now, this is just the county share. There's four other entities that are involved in this. So we can speak for ourselves here. Commercial industrial went down .33%. That's $2.12 for $100,000 rollback. Then for your townships near residential, it went down 15.83%, In the commercial industrial, it went down 2.53%, which is 22.22 savings, $22.22. And for the ag lands, it went down 15.46, which is $125.14 down. So the big effects were the different rollbacks. And also, just to deal, we did use a lot of reserves for next year. But next year, we'll just see where we go. But it's a good effort. It got the tax rate where they wanted it, and we move on from here. No services or employees were cut. And this does include elected officials' pay raises recommended by the comp board. That's all I got.
Thank you. And those were 3% across the board?
Yes.
Approved by the comp board? Any one to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget and resolution. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to acknowledge the hard work, scrutiny, and review of the supervisors, along with questions and creative solutions. And I think in nearly every area, we did some really good work. As you know, I'm not confident that same paradigm, in my opinion, has been applied to the law enforcement center. So I consider it a B-plus budget. But more concerning for me is the precedent spending for the next 20 years. And so for that reason, it's a bridge too far. But I want to acknowledge the hard work of the whole board, while respectfully disagreeing that's the best we could do. And then I also wanted to acknowledge the compensation board. As you know, legislation has changed the laws. So next year's board will have an option and will be less bound. But they followed through in recommending an increase at 3% that's in line with our union and non-union employees. And so I'm appreciative of that. And while I begrudge knowing that increase, I'll continue to work with our deputy auditor and HR director to not take an increase, as I made a commitment not to do so in 2014. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? We do a roll call, please?
Bittenger? Nelson?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. And the fiscal year 2025 budget passes four to one. Taylor opposed. Item C is approval of resolution amending the resolution authorizing the issuance of $800,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2024A, and levying a tax for the payment thereof, passed and approved on March 5th by substituting a new resolution therefore approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the notes and approval of the tax exemption certificate. Dennis?
There is one more thing we have to do is approval of the fiscal year resolution for the budget, which is?
Should that be a separate motion, or?
Separate motion, yes. Correct, Pat?
What's that?
And we approved the fiscal year budget, but we didn't approve the resolution.
Yeah, that's, we need one more motion.
We do?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes four to one. Taylor opposed. We're back to item 13C, which I'm not going to repeat.
No. This is just a resolution authorizing the issuance of the $800,000 CIP. This is our last step here. I think we plan on closing around February, March 17th and 18th in that area. And this is just one formal, we go, it actually approve of the tax exemption certificates and gives us authority to levy the taxes. We did a pre-levy before we did that resolution. This is the final one.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes four one. Taylor opposed. We're back to item 12 with the county.
I have a question. Do we need to receive this into the board's records? Does this, does this need to be received or no? The comparison Dennis gave us on the?
Okay, first up is the track loader bid. Price of the new machine, $109,090. There are some accessories. We'll put those in the final bid tabs. They maybe get to be a little bit lengthy to go over tonight. And they have offered us two options. The first is for a John Deere 325C. Bid price is $77,490. The trailer, $13,350. And then they have the full range of accessories. The second quote is for a 331G. Bid is $82,350. $13,350 for the trailer and then the equipment. The difference between the 331 and the 325 is horsepower. One's a 75 horsepower, or 74 horsepower machine. The second is a 90 horsepower. And we were interested in looking at the option. This is for Case, TR340B, as in Boy. Price of the new machine, $80,900. They did not bid a trailer. They also included the tools requested for utilization machine. Do you need that price again? Price of the new machine, $116,241.16. Then they have a discount in here and a second price listed of $103,903.46. I'll have to get with the salesman and find out what's going on with that. So, $116,241.69. Price on the trailer, $12,140. And they offer the full range of tools. This is for a Cat 299D3. Oh, I see what they did. $116,241 is for the 299D3. $103,903 is for the Cat 265. So they also offered a 90 and a 74-horse option. The difference between the two is the 90-horse requires DEF. The 74-horse is a diesel engine without DEF. That's diesel exhaust fluid. It's probably the biggest problem we have with any of our diesel equipment that we're purchasing today is most of the things we have to go to the shop for, it seems like, are a DEF pump plugged or a DEF line plugged. I see Mark nodding his head. He must be having the same experience.
It's not a great one.
The next one is from Suland Bobcat of Sioux City. And the first one they bid is the T740, which is the 74-horse machine. Price of the new machine, $81,825.11. For the trailer, $12,500. And they offer the full range of tools. The next one is for a T770, which is the 90-horse option. And purchase price on the trailer, $12,500, also with the full range of tools. I recommend the board receive the quotes and allow the county engineer to review them for compliance and make a recommendation of later date.
Second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Item 12E is to receive the motor grader quotes and return to the county engineer
We take bids from John Deere and from Ziegler for motor graders. They both have the parts support that's necessary for a machine we depend on virtually every day on the roads. Whether it's springtime like now or winter, the motor graders are really kind of the backbone of taking care of over 1,000 miles of our road system. So these are the two that have proven their ability to provide parts and support when needed. First bid is from Ziegler Cat. They are bidding a 150 machine. Bid price is $456,534.65. Trade-in on the current John Deere machine, $75,800. Net bid, $380,734.65. We're only bidding one motor grader this year. That allowed us to purchase the skid steer and the tandem, or upgrade from a single axle to a tandem this year. Our motor graders are at the place where we had everything that was newer than 12 years old, with the exception of the one we rebuilt last year. We put about 1,000 hours a year on a motor grader, just for the board's information. When they start getting over 13, 14,000 hours is when we start to see problems, transmissions, engines, those kind of things. So I've always tried to stay around that 12-year age once we've gotten into a regular machine replacement cycle. The second bid is from Murphy Tractor. Total bid price, $448,995. $70,000 trade-in. Net purchase price, $378,995. I recommend the board receive the bids and return them to the county engineer for evaluation.
Move that.
Second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, next is item F. Receive the wheel loader quotes and return to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
First bid is from Ziegler Cat. Total bid price, $366,611.73. 366, 611, 73. Trade-in on unit 526. This one will go to Hornick District. Trade-in, $16,300. Total bid, $350,311.73. We also asked for a bid on a demolition bucket on the side. That would be $29,195.
How many hours on that machine, that A21 that you traded?
I can't tell you for sure. It's, it's seen a good deal of service with us. It's been, it's been a good machine. Next bid is from Murphy Tractor. Next bid is from Murphy Tractor. Total bid price, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Two eighty-eight, eight hundred. Trade in on five twenty-six, twenty thousand dollars. Net price, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Demolition bucket and grapple, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, the first one I read was for a six forty-four G as in George. They also bid the six forty-four P as in Paul.
Six forty-four G on the first one?
The first one was a G, yes.
Well, that's just confusing. They going back to the same. You coming back to the old models again? No?
It's, it's. It doesn't have some of the electronic bells and whistles that the P does.
Is it as indestructible as the first series G?
Those are pretty good.
That's quite the loaded question in, in this area of DEF and diesel exhaust, uh, diesel exhaust filtration. Uh, the bid on the P is three thirty-nine, eight hundred, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Less trade of twenty thousand. Net purchase price, three hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. He's really giving us something to think about this year. Next bid is from Mid Country Machinery of Sergeant Bluff.
I just know those early six forty-four Gs or five forty-four Gs, it's hard to find one with less than twenty thousand hours. They just ran and ran and ran and ran. They're good machines.
Yeah.
Simple times.
If the guys had a favorite, they would tell you, like the John Deere loaders. We've got a number of them. Uh, next one is bidding, they're bidding a Z W. Two twenty dash seven. Um, this is an Atachi loader. Total bid price, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Trade in, fifteen thousand dollars. Net price, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, demolition bucket and grapple, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Next is from Road Machinery and Supplies Company of Sioux City. They're build, bidding a Kamatsu WA three eighty dash eight series. Total price, three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Trade in on five twenty-six, forty thousand, seventy-five dollars. Net purchase price, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, bid on the demolition bucket and grapple, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Next bid is from Titan Machinery, also Sioux City. Bidding the Case nine twenty-one G as in George. Uh, total price, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Trade in on five twenty-six, forty thousand dollars. Uh, net price, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Demolition bucket and grapple, twenty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Next bid is from Writers Equipment, Sioux City. Bidding a Hyundai HL nine sixty A.
Nine sixty or sixteen?
Nine six zero. Total price, two hundred and eighty-two thousand. Trade in on five twenty-six, forty-seven thousand dollars. Net price, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Price for the demolition bucket and grapple, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. There's a second envelope labeled Apple. That just provides information on what they're supplying, so. I recommend the board, uh, receive the bids. Allow the engineer to review them.
Motion by Raddick, second by Nelson. Any discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Now down to item fourteen, reports on committee meetings.
So I had two. I had MURD on Friday. We did award some grants, but that is not public info yet at this point as to what we awarded. So. That is the limit of that discussion. The MPO Policy Board. Uh, we amended our final draft of the tip that will be, it'll come before the MPO again in June. Uh, we also passed three resolutions. Um, a lot of the stuff is this, things we do at the beginning of the year. Uh, MPO Transportation Planning Work Program. Uh, that's an agreement with the Federal Highway, Federal Transit, and all three state DOTs. Uh, we had our MPO Planning Boundary Update, um, and the Passenger Transportation Plan. So all three of those were passed.
Very good. Plan was to transport passengers and.
That's the plan. Planning to plan and plan.
Mr. Nelson?
The only thing I have is last week after the board meeting, I went out to Dorothy Pico. They were having a volunteer appreciation night for all the volunteers that pitch in at, out at Dorothy Pico or any of our county parks. And they had a lot of people there. They had logged, I'm trying to remember, but it was just close to two thousand forty hours, volunteer hours last year, which is essentially one full-time person. So. And that's, I mean, any kind of work from, you know, teaching, uh, sessions, uh, working, you know, the, uh. Entrance staff, grooming trails, you know, any, any of that kind of stuff. And to have something for everybody. Um, and so it was really nice to visit with those people. A lot of them have been doing it for years. Just love it. And there was. Uh, what I, what I liked is there was young people and old people. There was just a nice mix of people getting involved. So we appreciate what they do.
Mr. Bittenger?
Sure. The only one I have is Supervisor Taylor and I, we're at the, our Veterans Affair meeting last Wednesday. And, uh, just two things first, uh, just they're doing good with training and awareness, you know, letting our veterans know what's out there. But I wanted to highlight this one statistic. Um, this is the, this is for the beneficiaries for February two thousand twenty-four. Polk County, I mean, Polk County is number one, of course, with the most veterans in the state of Iowa. Woodbury County is number six. Uh, but when you break it down per, per capita for the amount of benefits coming into our veterans, Polk County, they bring in one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars per veteran. Woodbury County brings in one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars per veteran. So we're just a hundred and seventy-nine dollars behind Polk County. And they've got more staff. They've got almost four times the amount of veterans as well. Uh, but I think it's just good, really just props to our Veterans Affair Office for working hard. And for February two thousand twenty-four, over January, they brought in another thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars of benefits to our veterans increased from the month before. Uh, that, that was awarded to them, you know, benefits that they, they could claim. So just props to them for doing a good job and taking care of our veterans. So that's all that I have.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, any reports on committees?
No, I just echo Supervisor Bittenger nicely done. And we did have a question at one time, well, where is all that money going? And that money is going directly to veterans who have, uh, served and sacrificed. So it's not like it's going into the county. That's going into disability benefits and other, other means and avenues to help those who have paid, um, so much. So nicely done. Thank you.
All right. Item fifteen is citizen concerns. Are any items not already addressed on the agenda? Are there any citizens concerned this evening? Seeing none. Item sixteen is board concerns. I will, uh, I would like to read a brief statement regarding Baker Group tonight. In the context of the Law Enforcement Center project, legally, they are the owner's representative. They've also been referred to as the project manager. Members of the public have made comments at board, at meetings in which they stated or implied that Baker Group had responsibility for the missing fire dampers that had to be thereafter installed, causing a delay in the project in two thousand twenty-three. Other board members also stated that the LAC Authority's legal counsel could not provide an independent or fair review of Baker Group's responsibility. Since that time, the authority and county have jointly hired an outside expert to look at the issue of the missing fire dampers. And such expert has definitively concluded that Baker Group has no liability or responsibility for this issue. Because of the prior inaccurate statements against Baker Group regarding the dampers, I feel it is important to correct the record. And I'm just happy to share that bit of good news and some resolution that a review has been done by a third party. Any other board concerns?
I think it would just be really important to completely reiterate to the media that that was done by an independent third party hired, uh, by the board and the LAC Authority. Because it's not us reviewing it. It's not our attorney. It's not Baker's attorney. This is somebody that, uh, in the industry of investigations, found no fault. So. Uh, that would be important to note again, reiterate. It's very important. As far as the, uh, is there the six PM upstairs tonight? Do we have two going? Cause I have something else going on.
I can go.
Last week we talked about the tuck pointing out building services, climbing hill. We weren't sure where we had on that. So, uh, MidCon is planning to come out in July and tuck point that. So I communicated that with Dennis yesterday and Kenny yesterday. Uh, so I think everything is fine there. And then my other question was for you. Have you contacted anybody at the landfill about their, uh?
No.
Okay, that's fine. I had, I had some other people ask some questions about that too. And I said, well, I'll just get back with Bittenger. But, you know, they were not taking demolition. And so they're just, they're just concerned citizens that don't want it to end up in the road ditch. And I don't think Mark Nara does either.
Okay. I'll have, yeah, I'll have a report for us for next week. I'll make sure we have that. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, any board concerns?
No, thank you.
Thank you. You are adjourned.
I just have one quick one. Yeah.
I misspoke.
That's all right. Real quick. It's real simple. Uh, just want to encourage everyone, uh, say a prayer for our county attorney's office, uh, that they were trying to fill those vacancies. And I know James is, uh, working hard and all the, all the employees that are doing a great job. And then just for the LAC completion, I know everyone's at their end of the rope, we could say, with this thing. Uh, but afterwards, I'm just going to step over here. Everybody wants to join me. Just a quick prayer for these two things. So I know, uh, these two things we have in our county. We want to make sure that these are, um, finished well. So, and that's all I've got. So.
Thank you very much. We are.